Welcome to the Pawtucket School Committee Regular Meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Ms. List, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benello.
Here.
Ms. Carney.
Here.
Mr. Shalow.
Here.
Ms. Doobie.
Here.
Ms. Fernandez.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Chavino.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move to Special Report of the Student Representatives. Anyone here from Charles E. Shea?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glanera Santos, and I am here with your, with the Shea Happenings. To begin with, we hosted a successful prom extravaganza at Tolman on March 28th. Shout out to Ms. Gomes and Ms. Wolf. Thank you for all the donations received. ASBAB and CIL by literacy testing took place back in mid-March. We're so proud of everyone who tested. These are the following senior events set in place: Senior Dinner, May 9th, Senior Prom, May 31st, Honors Night, May 22nd, Senior Trip, May 23rd. Yearbooks are on sale right now for $20. Spring sports have our own season right now, and they're practicing. We held a blood drive on April 3rd, and we met our goal for donations. Thank you to everyone who donated. There are a number of scholarships for seniors that are posted in guidance school classroom right now, but deadlines coming up. The Shea Fashion Show is set for May 4th. Tickets are all on sale right now. Representatives from different programs and opportunities have visited our students, like Electric Boat and Upper Bound. We are now at the store, a start of quarter four. Last week, we held our PSATs, SATs, and senior presentations. We are so proud of all our students for their hard work and dedication that day. We will soon be holding our celebration for students who have had at least 95% attendance in school. We're also in the midst of planning a fashion show pep rally as well. And last Friday, we held our spring fling dance. Over 120 kids came and had so much fun. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Anyone from Tolman?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jayla Labassier, and I'm the speaker for Tolman. It is spring, and there are so many things happening at Tolman. PSATs and SATs were on April 4th. The sophomores and juniors participated in the PSAT/SAT testing day. The sophomores and juniors were given an opportunity to show their knowledge on these very important assessments. Senior Supper was held on March 27th. Fifty-one seniors danced the night away at the annual Senior Supper at the Pawtucket Country Club. We are looking forward to prom season. Ticket sales are in full swing for the junior and senior proms. Junior Prom is May 3rd at the new Hope on Main venue, and Senior Prom is June 1st at the Viking in Newport. Many students will be participating in the national language exams, trying to earn the SEAL by literacy for graduation. Less than a month away for many of the senior class to decide what the next step in our journeys will be. We will be celebrating their important choices on our annual decision day. Seniors will soon be presenting their portfolios. Portfolio Day is fast approaching, and yet another sign that senior year is coming to an end. We get to show what we have learned over the last four years at Tolman in a comprehensive portfolio. Springs, spring sports are in full swing: Track, Baseball, Softball, Boys Tennis, Boys Volleyball, and Unified Basketball. Softball beat two-time defending champion Davies 10-0. Baseball started the season with a 4-1 win over PCD, and Unified Basketball is 2-0. We are looking forward to Earth Day. Our Earth Day will be on April 27th, and the National Honor Society students and others will help clean and plant flowers and plants to beautify our school. Thank you.
Nice job. And Jacqueline Walsh.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Souza, and I'm a senior visual art major at Jacqueline and Walsh School for the Arts. We've had a very busy few weeks. Mid-March, our dancers attended Rhode Island Ballet's Midsummer Performance at RIC. Our music and dancers attended a performance by First Works, and our theater majors attended a production of Twelfth Night at the Gam. One of our sophomores, Harmony Origi, was awarded the Key Spirit Award as a member of the Pawtucket Cheer Team. Our Tri-M Music Honor Society hosted an Ice Cream You Scream Ice Cream Karaoke Night, which was a fun way to spend time together. Our Grade 10 and 11 art students attended the Art League of Rhode Island for a workshop. This was part of a growing partnership that we are very excited about. On March 27th, our chorus attended and competed at the RIA CDA and Remia High School Choral Festival. Both our full chorus and a select chorus performed, and both received adjudication scores of excellent. Last Wednesday, our senior theater majors presented a senior monologue showcase where they performed pieces they had personally selected and prepared to showcase just how far they've come since their audition five years ago. We had a brief reception afterward, thanks to Aramark, where they went above and beyond making special-themed treats using our theater majors' color, orange. Last Thursday, our sophomores and juniors took the PSAT and SAT during the school day, and I know from my experience that they are definitely grateful that is now behind them. This past weekend, our jazz band performed, and our senior art majors showcased their work alongside artists from LaSalle and Rocky Hill School at the Art League of Rhode Island Student Showcase. The artwork will be on display at Art League of Rhode Island through April 27th. Coming up soon, we are gearing up for a very busy few weeks after April break. On Thursday, April 25th, we have a guest performance during advisory where we will all get to see a live jazz performance. On Friday, April 26th, we are presenting a senior-run student Broadway cabaret showcase featuring students in grades 9 through 12 from all five majors. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the show is at 6:30 PM. Anyone here is welcome to attend. On April 30th, we will have our first of two music senior recital nights, followed by a second one on May 7th. We are thrilled to have our students from all majors participate in a district-wide May Arts Night on May 1st. After break, our seniors will begin the SEAL by Literacy Test, and our juniors will be taking the NGSA Science Test on May 2nd, followed by AP exams, which start May 8th. We are also excited to welcome the high-fits group back on May 9th for a special performance during advisory. Last but not least, we are looking forward to prom on May 10th, which will be at the Omni in Providence. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Nicely done. All right, we will go to public participation. Alcidia Silva.
Boa noite. Eu vim esta noite com minha colega porque nós não podemos comparecer. A última reunião que houve e achamos importante trazer este assunto à tona novamente com a aproximação de eventos durante este tempo do ano letivo. A minha colega falou no dia 11 de outubro sobre a necessidade de traduzir materiais para todas as línguas para a comunidade do departamento escolar de Pawtucket. Ela acompanhou e perguntou algumas vezes à nossa administradora do prédio se tinhamos tradções da fonte de informações da conta Google e Skyward, que é fornecida para cada aluno do departamento escolar de Pawtucket, e hoje ainda não temos isso. Ela viu muitas acenos de cabeça e concordância na reunião de outubro, mas seis meses depois não estamos mais perto de proporcionar acesso igualitário à informação para todas as nossas famílias. Então estamos de volta para defender apenas, não apenas, as famílias dos alunos da minha sala de aula, mas todas as famílias de Pawtucket. Título 6 da Lei dos Direitos Civis de 1964 exige que os merciários da Assistência Financeira Federal tomem medidas razoáveis para tornar os seus programas, serviços e atividades acessíveis a pessoas com proficiência limitada em inglês. O acesso à informação é um direito básico ao qual a nossa comunidade tem direito. Nós sabemos que não somos a primeira, terceira ou mesmo a quinta pessoa a comparecer perante este comitê escolar de Pawtucket e expressar preocupações sobre isso. Há muitas iniciativas que estão a ser trabalhadas simultaneamente para melhorar o nosso distrito, muitas das quais estamos a trabalhar em conjunto para defender, para satisfazer as necessidades da nossa comunidade. Muitos deles exigem tempo e comissões para encontrar soluções. A igualdade e o acesso básico não devem ser algo que exija que tantos educadores solicitem repetidamente. Continuar com esse padrão de operação não se alinha com a nossa visão de cada aluno todos os dias. Não podemos continuar dizendo isso se não estivermos fazendo isso. Nova sinalização foi adicionada aos edifícios, e esses sinais estão apenas em inglês. Os botins escolares forem para nossas famílias, e os padrões e comentários não forem traduzidos. Recentemente solicitamos o formulário de solicitação de almoço para passeio, e ele só foi fornecido em inglês. Os formulários de triagem odontológica são traduzidos apenas só para espanhol. Mesmo, o formulário de seguro dos Chromebooks não foi traduzido para todos os idiomas necessários. Inglês, espanhol, português, pasto, árabe, francês, swahili, criol de cabo verde, criol de Haiti são as línguas faladas pelas famílias da minha escola. Quando os professores de Baldwin enviam informações para as famílias, traduzimos para todos esses idiomas usando o Google Tradutor, a ferramenta de tradução dos documentos do Google. Mais uma vez sabemos que existem diversas iniciativas em curso que requerem muito tempo e atenção. Este não é o problema específico dos alunos multilingues. Isto afeta toda a comunidade do departamento escolar de Pawtucket. Este poderia ser um item que pode ser facilmente corrigido. É uma questão de equidade, e este distrito continua a mostrar em total desrespeito pelas necessidades das nossas famílias ao recursar-se a resolver esta questão. Queremos que nossos alunos façam progresso. Os alunos não podem fazer progresso sem o apoio da família e também dos professores. As famílias de Pawtucket merecem melhor.
My colleague is going to translate that for you. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth McLeod. I'm up on next on your list. Hello. I'm going to start by thanking my colleague for translating that speech for me into Portuguese to help you understand why I'm back here again. On October 11th, I spoke about needing materials translated into all languages for the PSD community. I followed up and asked my building administrators a couple of times if we had the translations of the Google Skyward Account Information Sheet that is provided to each student for Pawtucket School Department, each Pawtucket School Department student, and today we still don't have that. I saw a lot of head nodding and agreement, 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 excuse me, at the last meeting, but six months later, we're no closer to providing equal access for information for all of our families. So I'm back again to advocate not just for the families of the students in my classroom, but for all of the families in Pawtucket. Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 requires recipients of federal financial assistance to take reasonable steps to make their programs, services, and activities accessible by persons with limited English proficiency. Access to information is a basic right our community is entitled to. I know I'm not the first, third, or even fifth person to stand before this Pawtucket School Committee and voice concerns about this. There are many initiatives that are being worked on simultaneously to improve our district, many of which we are working together to advocate to meet the needs of our community. Many of them retire, require time and committees to find resolutions. Equality and basic access should not be something that should require this long, are so many educators to repeatedly request. Continuing the standard of operation does not align with our vision of every student every day, and we can't keep saying it if we aren't doing it. New signage has been added to buildings, and those signs are in English only. Report cards went home for our families, and the standards and comments were not translated. Recently, we requested the field trip lunch request forum, and it was only provided to us in English. Dental screening forums are only translated into Spanish, and the Chromebook Insurance Form, last I knew, was only, was not translated into every language we need. English, Spanish, Portuguese, Pashto, Arabic, French, Swahili, Cape Verdean Creole, and Haitian Creole are the languages that the families at my school speak. When Baldwin teachers are sending information home, we translate into all of these languages using Google Translate or the translation tool in Google Docs. Again, I know there are several initiatives that are taking place that require much time and attention. This is not an issue specific to MLL students. This affects the entire Pawtucket School Department community. It could, this could be one item that is easily rectified. It is an issue of equity, and the district continues to show a complete disregard for our families' needs with its refusal to address this issue. We want our students to make progress. Students cannot make progress without the support of their families as well as their teachers. Pawtucket families deserve better.
I'm back, but I'm not going to speak in Portuguese. I'm going to speak in English to advocate for my MLL students and newcomers in my classroom. This past week, I attended a training for C-Space, which is an amazing technology that enables our students to see content in 3D using the 3D technology. I was ecstatic to hear that this resource has lessons that have been translated into many languages, and they're still working on translating into more languages so that all our students can have access to this. What I was extremely disappointed in was the fact that the trainer told me that she showed students and staff this option to translate materials, and the staff member, sorry, I'm getting emotional. The staff member told her that if we don't have all the languages, we can't have students use what the languages were there. So basically, nobody could access the languages that were available, and we're not able to use them, and that's not okay. At one point at the beginning of the school year, I advocated for my newcomer Spanish speaker to be able to use Iranian Spanish, because I know it's available in Spanish. Other teachers I've seen online can use Iranian Spanish. He is at grade level. He's a fifth grader. He is at grade level, fifth grade math, and I already has placed him in kindergarten math. He does not need to know his shapes. He knows his shapes. He does not need to know how to add one-digit numbers. He's working on fractions right now. He needs to have this material available to him in his home language, because he is not proficient in English yet. And Title 6 makes it so that these students who do not have English proficiency yet to have access to the content and materials in their native language, so that they can be at the same level or have equity in their education as the monolingual students in their classrooms. I'm sorry, but the excuses are unacceptable. The fact that we are being told it's not a practice of the Pawtucket School Department is unacceptable. Pawtucket needs to do better. Our students deserve better, and our teachers also deserve to have these materials so they can work with their students and have their students meet the expectations and the standards that are required. Thank you.
And Ms. Sealback.
Hi, good night. My name is Sarah Sealback. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight. I'm a mom of three children that, from the, and students of our public schools. Today, I wish to offer parents perspective on the methodology used for the recent approval of the school calendar for the year 2024/2025. After watching the last meeting online, I was surprised by the factors considered in determining the new calendar. What concerns me the most and the focus of my appeal to this committee tonight is the rationale behind the decision-making process. You know, let's take the whole week off for Thanksgiving, followed by two weeks for the Christmas break, pushing the school year almost to July because some kids go on vacation anyway. And this reasoning appears weak and lacks empirical data to support it. Moreover, in a complex district like ours, one would expect a more comprehensive consideration of variables such as food insecurity, temperature control, building capabilities, days of sunshine, and more. So to suggest that extending the school calendar doesn't matter because children will have those days off anyway, I believe it's irresponsible without a backup plan to ensure structural support for such a decision. For instance, there's no childcare provision prepared to accommodate unexpected random vacation days that do not align with the schedules of other districts, neighbor states, businesses, et cetera. Fortunately, we already have programs in place for typical predictable school calendar, so summer opportunities that offer financial aid, if not free, for families in need. Therefore, if, if our district is going to approve a calendar that can negatively impact our families, it should be accompanied by a comprehensive plan to mitigate any collateral issues. So I strongly urge to this committee reconsider and uphold a predictable calendar, supported by a social safety net that strengthens our community. I find a two-week break for Christmas particularly problematic concerning food insecurity, energy poverty, and lack of social supports for many families in our district. Furthermore, it goes without saying that no child should be in school by June 27, especially, especially in a state like ours where sunny days are limited. Therefore, I very respectfully request this committee to consider all relevant variables and factors going beyond mere convenience when making such a significant decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sealback. All right, we will move to recognition. Superintendent?
I gotta move the podium. Oh, good evening. Can we please have the cheerleaders report to the front of the room? All cheerleaders?
All of a sudden, you're shy?
Oh my God, the coach is walking. You're okay? You gonna be okay? Thank you, beautiful ladies. First of all, first and foremost, they say our head coach. She's walking. So let's give the coaches a huge round of applause, starting with our head coach. Kara Ogden, and our assistant coach. Sophia Markinson. Let's give them a, Marquezzy, sorry. Give a round of applause. Thank you. So Coach. And Coach Kelly is being a mom home with her two little ones, because they're sick. Understand. So can I get you?
Sure.
Either one. Because I don't want to mispronounce anyone's name. Okay, so before we start, I have a speech, of course, to recognize our beautiful young ladies as athletes. And like I said before, my last, I am definitely a basketball mom. I played sports, and so did my own children. So I'm a huge fan of yours. So good evening. I'm overjoyed to stand before you today to extend my heartfelt congratulations to the Shea and Tolman cheerleading co-op team on their remarkable achievement of winning the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division One Championships, because, look, you keep the teams going. You keep the energy going at the games. So I really appreciate that. This victory is a testament to your unwavering dedication, relentlessness, determination, and exceptional talent. From the first practice to the final routine, you have poured your hearts and souls into your performance, demonstrating unparalleled commitment and resilience every step of the way. Your hard work, your discipline, and perseverance have paid off, culminating in this well-deserved championship title. Winning the RIIL Division One Championship is no small feat. It is a testament to the hours, hours of practice, the countless sacrifices, thank you, coaches, and the unwavering teamwork that have propelled this extraordinary group of athletes to the top of their game. Yes, you're true athletes. Their synchronized movements, dazzling routines, and infectious enthusiasm have captivated audiences and inspired us all. I think I did a cheer too with you all at the game once before. So, but beyond the trophies and accolades, the Shea and Tolman cheerleading co-op team's victory is a testament to the power of unity, determination, and the pursuit of excellence. They have shown us what can be achieved when individuals come together with a shared vision, a common goal, and a relentless drive to succeed. Today, as we celebrate their triumph, let us all take a moment to acknowledge the individual support and guidance provided by their coaches, mentors, families, and supporters. Their unwavering encouragement, tireless dedication, and unwavering belief in the team have been instrumental in helping them reach their pinnacle of success. As you bask in the glow of this incredible achievement, remember to cherish the memories, celebrate the victories, and savor the moments of triumph. Your journey to the top has been nothing short of extraordinary, and you have earned every bit of the success that has come your way. You are a shining example of what can be achieved through hard work, determination, and teamwork, and we are all honored to celebrate this momentous occasion with each and every one of you. Congratulations.
I know which one to leave out for you. She's not here tonight, but her mom is.
Oh, okay. Some of the girls couldn't make it tonight. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your support from, from the parents, from the girls especially, from the parents, from the school department, from our athletic directors. We do get a lot of support, and we appreciate that. But spring sports are in session, so some of the girls are at track meet, some of the girls are working, some of the girls, there's other stuff going on that they just couldn't be here. They would want to be here if they could. So tonight, who's not here is one of our seniors, Ciara McLean, but her mom is here. Her mom, Monique, is one of our family supporters who does a lot to help us. Shayla Samoya is also not here. She is working a job tonight, but we can hope on it. We'll take a little picture. Harmony Origi. She's a student here at JMW. Jesslyn Avia is also not here. She's on another sports team at this moment. And her sister, Joelysa Avia, also not here. They're both on another sports team together, so they couldn't make it this evening. We have Naomi Barbosa. Madison Bibby. So Maddie and Naomi are captains, and Ciara's also a captain. Victoria Brown, Vicky, she's at a track meet tonight. Ms. Lillian Danqua. Soon to be a superstar. Destiny Goncalves. Brianna Hodzinski. Joyce Cooley, who's at a track meet tonight. We have Keleisha Morales. Juliana Oliveras. Keisha Lee Morales, KK. Catherine Silvestri, she's not here tonight, unfortunately. Is that everyone? That's everyone. Thank you again very much for your support from the whole city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a huge round of applause. Congratulations, ladies. Yes, give it up again. That's right. Okay, so we're moving on to our next award recipient. Can I please have Principal Bridget Boucher to the front? And her visitors and guests who are here with her? I get to put you on the spot. So with great pride and excitement, I stand before you today to extend our heartfelt congratulations to Ms. Bridget Boucher, Principal of Francis Verrier Elementary School. The Rhode Island Association of School Principals has selected her as the Principal of the Year. Let's give her a huge round of applause. She is the Principal of the Year for the state. This prestigious honor is a testament to Ms. Boucher's exceptional leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to educational excellence. Ms. Boucher's selection as Principal of the Year is a well-deserved recognition of her outstanding contributions to our school community. Throughout her tenure, she has consistently demonstrated visionary leadership, innovative thinking, and a deep-rooted passion for fostering nurturing and inclusive learning environment where every student can thrive. Under Ms. Boucher's guidance, Verrier Elementary School has flourished as a lighthouse of educational excellence, creativity, and collaboration. Her transformative leadership has inspired educators, empowered students, and strengthened the bonds of our school community, laying the foundation for success that will resonate for years to come. Ms. Boucher's tireless efforts to create a culture of excellence, compassion, and academic rigor have set a standard that exemplifies the best educational leadership. As we celebrate Ms. Boucher's well-deserved recognition as Principal of the Year, let us also express our gratitude for her unwavering commitment to the success and well-being of every student entrusted to her care. Her leadership inspires us all, reminding us of the transformative power of education to change lives and shape futures. I extend our heartfelt congratulations to Ms. Bridget Boucher. On behalf of the entire school community, your selection as Principal of the Year is a testament to your leadership, your impact on students, families, and educators. We are immensely proud to call you our principal and look forward to celebrating many more achievements. Thank you, Ms. Boucher, for your extraordinary leadership and unwavering commitment to educational excellence. You are an inspiration and a shining example of the difference that one dedicated educator can make in the lives of so many. Congratulations once again.
We will move on with the rest of our meeting. Next item is approval of previous meeting minutes from 3:12:24. Motion to approve the minutes at 3:12:24 by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All business discussion action items. School committee policy, second passage, Ms. Doobie.
So we have second passage of the ECAC vandalism policy. There were no changes. This is a new policy for the district.
Motion to approve ECAC vandalism policy by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion on the policy? Second pass. Roll call on the second pass, please.
Ms. Benolo? Ms. Carney? Mr. Shalal? Ms. Doobie? Ms. Fernandez? Ms. Grant? Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes. All right, new business discussion action items. Approval of revised 24, 25 school calendar. Superintendent?
Okay, so... Thank you to the mom that came up and gave us some feedback. And as a result of that feedback, along with, I also heard from some teachers, I heard a lot from our 1350, 52 union as well, and I met with Ron and his leadership team. We sat together, we went through the calendar, taking those insights into consideration. And so here are some of the major changes that we made. And Ron, you're more than welcome to come to the podium and join me in the conversation. But here are some of the major changes that we made. Students will start school first day on the 29th, and that is due to the fact that we need two mandated trainings for our teacher, teaching staff. So three of those days, the first three days, will be dedicated to professional development for our teaching staff. Also, we moved around some of our professional days. We also, I heard very clearly about the two days in November, so those are back as regular school days, the Monday and the Tuesday, the 25th and the 26th. Also, as a result, school will also be ending earlier than the anticipated date. So now the last day of school will be June 18th, right before Juneteenth. And then we also gave back, there was a professional day in May 16th that is not a regular school day. So we will be posting all of the changes on our district website, so it'll be available to all. Did I miss anything? Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I don't have a copy in front of me, so I'm not exactly sure if there is or anything. I also don't have my glasses. I think that you are absolutely correct, Superintendent, and I'd just like to say thank you for the conversation we had last week and the opportunity to try to work on where we fit in these professional days. This will be the first year we have three in August, one of which being a Right to Read Act Day in order to fit that in and getting us out of school. As you know, I was the only person at the table who was not in agreement with the two weeks at Christmas. And I think I even said last week, I was also at the dinner table, the only person who was not in agreement with two weeks at Christmas. So I appreciate the conversation and hearing the voice of the community and the members and the ability to work together to revise the calendar that makes sense for everyone. So thank you.
Mr. Shalal, can I get a motion first, and then we'll open it up for discussion? Motion to approve the revised 2024, 2025 school calendar by Mr. Shalal, seconded by Ms. Fernandez. Discussion, Mr. Shalal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to take too much time, but I want to thank everyone for working together on this. I want to thank the superintendent. I want to thank President Boprey. I want to also thank the community. The community has spoken loud about this calendar that we passed last meeting. I think if anybody saw it, although you could hear it in my voice, I had a lot of concern, but you guys worked collaboratively, and you said this is a good calendar. I had a lot of reservations. I still have a couple of... I think there's a couple more days in here that could get you out earlier in June, but you guys worked together. But I want to echo that the superintendent and the president said they heard from the community. We have to remember and keep that in mind, because our schools are community schools. And a school calendar has a direct effect on our community. I voted for it because of what I heard, but I remember calling Chairman, I want to give Chairman Charbonneau credit too. He took my call. He listened to my concern, and I told him, I said, Chairman, I'm going to bring this up for reconsideration, since I voted in the affirmative. But could you please work with the superintendent and try to come up with a solution to this? And on Friday, you gave me a call and said, thank you for your patience, and you believe that you have a much better revised calendar. June 18th is, it's on par. I would like to have seen maybe Monday the 16th or that Friday the 13th, but you guys worked together, and I can't thank you guys enough, because this school committee had a $50 million elementary school spring leak, not once but twice on us. We had a superintendent vote a couple of months ago. We had a teacher contract a couple of months ago, and the community did not speak as loud and as long as they did for this calendar, because it affected them daily. This affected their daily lives. So thank you very much for your leadership, both of you, and thank you, Chairman Charbonneau, for making this something very important to get done. Thank you.
Ms. Fernandez?
I did not vote to approve this last time around. I felt as a parent, as a working parent, I needed to speak for the working parents. And this is much better. I did bring my concerns. I heard it from the same thing. I heard from teachers, I heard from parents, and so I did bring my concerns as well to the superintendent, and I'm glad that you two could make some changes to the calendar. I still am not a huge fan of two weeks at Christmas either. Again, being a working parent, that's a tough thing. But as you said, Mr. Boprey, this comes around every once in a while, and we deal with it. And so I am very, very thankful that you guys took, gave us back those Monday and Tuesday in November.
Ms. Benolo?
So first, I'd like to thank you all for the time you put in on the calendar. The two days that I have concern with is January 2nd and January 3rd. That means our students have been out of school for over two weeks without the ability to have free breakfast, have lunches available to them. They don't have the resources that the schools can provide to them. As far as educationally, after two weeks off, the students are fidgety when they come back, and it takes them a couple of days to settle in. Those could be their couple of days to settle in and allow them to get the nourishment that they need to start the following week off. I'm very concerned as far as nutrition goes, because the food banks have been overloaded. The backpackers feed 500 students every week, and we have food pantries in eight of our schools. So that displays that there is a need in the city of Pawtucket for additional food, and our students are facing food insecurity. So for that reason, I would like to see if there's anything we can do to take care of the second and third and allow our students to come back to school early.
I think that the calendar presented in the packet is the approved revised calendar, which has students and staff out of school the second and the third. I think that's what's in front of us. There is no way of trying to take back days at this point. You know, the question and the item, the agenda item in front of us is this draft, revised draft for our approval. Anything else on the calendar? Ms. Doobie?
I just want to clarify further that if this revised draft is not approved, legal can clarify, we do revert back to the calendar that was approved last time, correct? Because we voted in favor of a previous calendar, correct? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to check.
Anything else on the calendar? Ms. Grant?
It doesn't have to do with the calendar specifically. It has to do with what Ms. Benolo was skating. Would it be possible, if maybe, as a side note, that maybe either the superintendent or the assistant superintendents could speak to Aramark to see if maybe there's something they could do at the end of the second week, where students could maybe do a drive-by? Not every school, but maybe you could do every two schools or whatever, that they could go to something, just so maybe they could look into.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think the superintendent's heard the concerns of both you and Ms. Benolo. Again, the item in front of us is the revised calendar, but whatever takeaways she leaves the meeting with, I think she's more than willing to share those with us in a plan, you know, towards that end. Anything else about the calendar as is? I will say, I did hear from several members. Mr. Shalal had mentioned his wanting to bring this back on. He and I had a couple of different conversations, and I appreciated the fact that he was open to the idea of letting the superintendent and the union president have further discussion on it, and that's why his name's not associated with the specific agenda item. But it would have been, had it not been worked out between the superintendent and President Boprey. So, Mr. Shalal, I appreciate the kind words, but I appreciate the patience through this process as well. So thank you. Anything else on the calendar? Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo? Ms. Carney? I'm sorry, was that you guys? Thank you. Mr. Shalal? Ms. Doobie? Ms. Fernandez? Ms. Grant? Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving along. Approval of summer food service agreements, YMCA Camp Westwood, Warren Parks and Rec, and East Providence Recreation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Pawtucket School Department currently utilizes Aramark for its food service. The food service program is currently out to bid. As part of the contract, the food service vendor in place with the district will offer a variety of catering services to school functions. In addition, we have an opportunity to continue summer service with Warren Parks and Rec, East Providence Rec., the YMCA Camp Westwood as catering services. The agreements of catering services will run in conjunction with the summer program for Pawtucket, which the dates have not yet been completely finalized. We are seeking your approval this evening to approve the summer agreements with Warren Parks and Rec., East Providence Recreation, and YMCA Camp Westwood as recommended.
Motion to approve the summer food service agreement, YMCA Camp Westwood, Warren Parks and Rec., and East Providence Rec. by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion, Ms. Doobie?
Thank you so much for bringing this to us. I know we're actively pursuing moving to CEP for the entire district next year, and I believe you were on the call with Ride, and they clarified, they made clear that all of this vending money can be used to help our school, our school's transition. So not only are we providing, you know, these meals to the people in the camps, but the revenue that the program gets is then going to make it even easier for our district to fully move to CEP next year and have free meals for all of our students.
And to that point, Ms. Doobie, I'd like to add some notes from Josh, who was unable to attend this evening. He said these two districts, Warren and East Providence, last year made $62,000 and Pawtucket $23,000, and will make $66,000 this summer, $66,000 due to price increase. Camp Westwood started using our services last year, and we anticipate them earning $63,000 for Pawtucket this summer.
That's wonderful.
Outstanding. Anything else on the approval? Motion on the floor to approve the summer food service agreements. It's been seconded. No further discussion. Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo? Ms. Carney? Mr. Shalal? Ms. Doobie? Ms. Fernandez? Ms. Grant? Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. All right, approval of Slater fence repairs. Mr. Silva.
How is everybody tonight?
Good. How you doing?
Not bad, thank you. I'm here tonight to ask for approval to replace a section of the Slater fence that was damaged by a car, in a car accident. We contacted a couple of vendors to replace it, but all we could find was one response because it's a specialized wrought iron fence that they're going to have to fix. wrought iron fence that they're going to have to fabricate. They're going to have to fabricate, paint, prime, and install approximately 37 feet of wrought iron fence to match the existing fence with the fence that, the fence will have three inch support posts, angle iron horizontals, and three-quarter inch pointed pickets. The fence was damaged from a car accident. We received one response to our request from G. Menucci and Sons for a total of 12,400. We would pay for this initially out of the local and then it would be reimbursed by the trust. And we recommend that the school committee accept G. Menucci and Son proposal for the Slater fence work.
Motion to approve the Slater fence repairs by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Doobie and Ms. Grant. Any discussion on the fence? Ms. Doobie?
So, the trust will be okay with, we, we, we went out to bid and we were only able to get one vendor?
Yes.
So, this is all, okay?
Yes, we've been in touch with the trust right along the way.
Chris, what's the condition of the rest of the fence at Slater?
It was good. It's, if you, Slater has, in the front section, has three sections of angle iron fence. They took out, the car took out the section on Middle Spring Ave near Hicks Street, so near the McDonald's side, didn't touch the other sides of the fence.
Yeah.
So, if we had to replace the whole fence, it would probably be approximately 250 linear feet of it instead of 37.
Right. But, I mean, we're not going to put 37 feet up a brand-new straight fence-
No, no, no.
And everything else is-
Yes. It's, everything's fine.
Okay. All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve G. Menucci and Son, in the amount of 12,400. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Shalal?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes. Thanks, Chris. All right. We are moving on to discussion items. City school finance update. Superintendent Royal.
So, I have some small updates. First of all, we hired a controller Friday. Yay! I'm excited. So, we do have a controller that we hired. We'll be starting in two weeks. So, excited about that. We have upcoming interviews on this Friday for our CFO. So, still looking forward, fingers crossed. Also, just to keep everyone on the same page, that we still have not received our final budget for the previous school year. So, still waiting on that. Just recently asked for another, some additional information. The deadline is still the 17th. I did, I am working with the firm Markham. So, we're waiting on our final quotes for that. Diane has been very supportive and helpful with that, getting that, securing that. So, hopefully we'll have information back as far as the final quotes for that so they can come in and get started, even though I think they have already started because they asked for some information from us. So, looking forward to that as well.
Ms. Fernandez?
Can I ask a question, please, because I didn't really know about the budget? So, when you say they didn't, haven't finalized last year's budget, does that mean the city hasn't transferred the money from last year's budget to us? What does that mean?
Some of that, both. So, they haven't finalized it. And like I said, I've been working very closely with the previous CFO, who's been very helpful and supportive. And she also stated, "We can't really move forward without them finalizing last year's budget." So, that still has not been done. I've been working with the city, been working, communicating with them practically every day throughout the day and making sure that we can get that finalized so that we can move forward. We'll think we're done. Like Friday, I thought we submitted everything and they came back, "Okay, I need this information." So, not sure where the city stands in all of that, but on our side, when they ask us for the information, we give it to them immediately. I've been working very closely with RIDE team, who's been very supportive throughout this work, along, like I said, with our previous CFO.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Transition space handicap bathrooms. Ms. Ramsey, are you taking that one? Did I just say, because your name's next to it? I don't know.
I'm here to answer any questions. I can shed some light if you would wish. I know at the last school committee meeting, questions were asked with regard to that.
Yeah. And I know, Ms. Grant, this is your item and you brought it up last meeting. I said I would look into it further. I have some additional information as well, but I don't know if you want to-
Well, I, I can, before we stop- I'll shed a little light and then maybe Ms. Ramsey can take on from there. So, in the fall, myself, Ms. Ramsey, Dr. Andre, and Dr. Tate all met in regards to the transition area. When we left that day, I had stated to Ms. Ramsey, "I will call Ms. Benolo, tell her you're going to be reaching out to put it on the next agenda for it to be voted on." Fast forward, it was never placed on the agenda and then Ms. Benolo had a meeting early December for updates. And at that time, I asked why it was never placed on the agenda for facilities. And I was told that there was no funding source ever figured out for it, which I, I found that a little hard to believe because the conversation had started prior with Ms. Devine and Ms. Devine had been in on the conversation. But basically, that's kind of where it ended with the updates and being told that it wasn't put on because there was no funding source.
And pardon me one second while I go back to my notes. I should have printed it off. But what I was able to, to find out was that the, the item was tabled. The item was tabled like months ago and never, never brought back for consideration. It was placed on a subsequent agenda and the, the item was moved forward, but it was never, it was never removed from the table to have a further discussion. But months after, the item got placed on an agenda and it got moved forward. And I, I'll, I'll get, I'll get the information out to the committee, the, the dates of the meetings and you can refer to the minutes themselves. But it was, it was never, I'm sorry, I just had it. So, the, the bathroom projects for Curtis, Varia, Toman, and Kirven were funded through ESSA and the schematic design presented at the 12, 13, 22 meeting, 22. And again, at the 126, 23 work session, that we approved submitting it to RIDE. The Life Skills Suite project was initially going to be at both the admin buildings and Jenks. However, it was determined there was only enough money to do the project at one location and the facilities committee made the decision to go with the admin building. Fast forward to 8, 24, 23, the Life Skill project update was brought before the school committee at that work session where Ms. Benolo moved to table the item. Then it was brought back again before the committee on 9, 12, 23 in a regular meeting where the agenda item was passed. So, I think we have a few different, and then the, the agenda item was last on September 26th of 23. That was on a facility subcommittee agenda, but I can't find those minutes. So, I think we have a couple of things here. One is, I think, I'm going to ask that you indulge me to put it on the next agenda as an item, to be removed from the table. I, I have to go back through the minutes of the meeting that we passed the item and figure out what, what funding source we assigned to it and how we passed it then. And then I think we can clear it all up and the, the project, my understanding is there is some, there's been some movement on it, correct?
Yes, we have had architects in. We have worked through the design. We've done numerous walkthroughs and then it stopped.
Right, okay. Ms. Benolo?
So, the reason it stopped was we had a new CFO and we were told that there was no funding for that bathroom, even though when Ms. Devine was here, we did have funding. But when he came in, we were told that there was no funding and that was the reason it was tabled. And until we found a funding source, which I was never informed there was another funding source for it, so it couldn't have been removed from the table.
Right. And I guess that's where the confusion comes in, is it was never removed from the table, but the item was passed a couple of months down the road and we've expended funds on it, on an item that's still tabled. So, we got to sort all that stuff out. I, I don't want to bore the, and take anybody, but I think if the committee will indulge, we'll keep chipping away at this. We'll bring it back next meeting and we'll keep bringing it back, Ms. Grant, until we get it straightened out and funded correctly and then we'll go from there. Thank you. Safe and orderly schools update. There's a pretty comprehensive update last one you gave us. Any meetings since?
So, we have had, and Heather Rodriguez is here. She is a member of the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee. So, she and I can absolutely speak to any questions that you may have. But we have met a couple of times since our last update on Safe and Orderly Schools. We have really kind of honed in on the criteria that is going to be needed for students, comprehensive criteria that is going to be needed for staff and students to follow in order to identify a student as potentially being in need of any kind of alternative programming. We have kind of shifted through and we have some plans for alternative learning programs. Heather, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we're just, we're really focusing more, we've shifted the focus to more long-term systemic solutions and really just getting the criteria ready to hopefully have our own program up and running to replace other available options that we used in the past.
Did I call you Heather Hopkins?
It's okay. Everyone, everyone does.
I didn't mean to. It's Heather Rodriguez for the minute.
She's the more important Heather.
We have also added just recently a middle school component to the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee, separate right now because their needs are a little different. And we had our first meeting with the middle school Safe and Orderly Committee and we went through the needs, the wants, the desires, and the goals. And we have to increase that attendance a little bit and that could have been in my invite. So, I will absolutely increase that attendance and we'll get that out and we'll do it right after Vacation Tuesday, both of them.
Anything on Safe and Orderly Schools? Is it me or does it seem like a, a switch has been flipped? Like- Well, I just, I wonder what, I wonder why. It, it was day after day after day after day and I, I haven't heard anything.
Are you speaking of like incidents at the school?
Incidents at the schools.
Um, I mean, we, to be honest and just truthful, we're having a lot of the same issues as far as, still not having a solution for those students who are having a hard time existing in the schools and trying to work with them. I know, I can only speak for my school right now, but our admin team has really, really kicked up their, their consequences in trying to really hone in on those students that are causing the most chaos in our building. For like, I know we've been doing more tardy sweeps and more, more SSR and really trying to direct the attention towards those problems. I know that we've had some resolutions to some other issues that finally got the placements that they needed and like the supports that they needed. But again, only speaking for Shea, I know that there's been a push from the faculty to be in the hallway more, to be engaged more, to be like really like taking ownership of, of that, just kind of as a collective. But I think there ha, I mean, we haven't had any of the big, like the ones that would like make the news. But we've definitely still been having those same day-to-day problems, but I think there is, there's progress. I would say we're definitely moving in the right direction. I know that everyone on the safety committee is really dedicated to trying to find long-term solutions so that this does not continue to be a problem and that we don't see the younger grades kind of feeding into this as much. So, I know that in our school, I think they're really, they're really working towards the ninth and 10th graders, getting them back on track, getting them back in the buildings. Like, we're into where they need to be.
And forgive my ignorance on this, but aren't a tardy sweep something that we should be doing as the normal course of a school day? Or is that, that's something that we brought in to address the, the incidents we have?
Tardy sweeps are a response to students being late to class. It is a proactive approach to a reactive problem, if that makes any sense. We need to get the students in class and on time and they need to know that we're consistent and serious about them being in their seats on time each and every day. So, the surprise tardy sweep every now and then catches the student. So, is it new? Is it something that we should always be doing? It's something that should be done. A tardy sweep is more designed to capture the larger groups so it can reduce the number of students that are late to class.
And we've aligned breakfast now to end when the school day starts?
As, at Shea, it's, it's at the start and at Toman, it's at 8:15.
But, so what, school starts at Toman at 8 o'clock, right?
Oh, tardy sweeps are during the day from period to period.
No, I, I understand that. But if, if we're serving breakfast till 8:15-
Grab and go only. So, they can come in, grab a bar, and go to class.
So, like at Shea, for example, there are students that come late. We, I mean, we address this every year, every time. So, what we've done is they have a special cart at the top of the stairs so they check in late. They grab their food, they go to class.
Is that how they work at Toman too?
Yes.
Because I heard conversation about kids going down into the cafeteria and that the, the locking door wasn't locking and-
Correct. That was, we don't serve breakfast after the start of school in the cafeteria. It's only grab and go.
And that's done on a table upstairs by the office when they check in?
Correct. Right at the tardy sign-in ways.
Right, okay. Anything else?
You know, thank you. Thank you very much. But I'm hearing, you know, we hear a lot about the, you know, the problems and such. And I've never been a teacher. I've never worked in a school, but I've worked with teenagers for my whole adult, adult life. And if you don't have relationships with them, you're not going to have results. And I feel very strongly, being in Toman and Shea, I think that that was really missing the relationships between the adults and the students. And I'm not saying all of them. I, I just think, I would just, I would hope that there would be some relationship-building discussions because, because you're going to get better results when you build relationships. It's, it's a fact.
You're right.
I absolutely agree. Just as a, I, so I was, had the good fortune. I've been able to teach in both high schools. So, I've been able to see, like, they're very different. They're very different communities. There's different chemistry between the kids and the students. And what I would say is like, as a Shea teacher and a former Toman teacher, but speaking only for Shea tonight, I think the relationships that I see in the schools are incredibly strong. In fact, a lot of the emergency situations that we've had this year have been really diffused by the relationships that those teachers have with students. And it's reflective of the idea of that, and it is, even the most problematic student perhaps or a student that's having the hardest time adapting to the building or just is having a hard time adjusting into our normal classrooms is actually, usually has really good relationships with a lot of the teachers. Like, I'll go in the hallway and say, "Hey, guys, I'm teaching." And they're like, "Oh, sorry, miss, we're going to quiet." And like, they, they go, it's, it's more of, if there aren't hard, firm rules, consequences, and expectations perhaps, that it's almost like, why for them? So, I said to some of my seniors, because I have the, the benefit of teaching seniors, but I taught ninth graders for a very long time. And I was like, "Why don't you go to class?" And they're like, "I can't sit for an hour and a half" or "I have a sub." And they're like, "No, I had a student last year and this is just, he came 15 minutes later. I was, where were you?" He goes, "Oh, I thought I had a different class, but like, I realized it was yours, so I came." They have pretty strong relationships. And can we do better? Absolutely. Can we get stronger? Absolutely. But when there's nothing past suspension and there's, and it's not, and we're not providing an environment where the child can be successful, not every kid can be 28 kids in a class and go to seven classes a day and have a 15-minute lunch. And like, as a student myself, I would have needed a much longer break during the day. I don't know that I could academically, especially when this part of their development, they're so, the growing, like, learning is exhausting. And so, when there's no breaks during the day- And so when there's no breaks during the day, sometimes they self-force those breaks. Um, and then they'll hide in the bathroom. And that's when, you know, teenagers all together in a space don't always make the best decisions. Um, but I do think that if we can have a plate, if we can adjust ourselves to the idea that not every kid can fit into every box, just like not every teacher can fit in every box. You know, I failed geometry multiple times. I could never teach that class. Um, we'd have better expect, we'd have, have better outcomes because they would see a pathway towards their own success.
I agree.
If that, if that makes sense.
No, absolutely. Thank you. It does sound like you, you are doing some of that.
I, I mean, what I want to say for our faculties in both of our schools is a lot of this is coming from how much we love our kids and how much we want them to be successful. And that's where a lot of that frustration, I think, comes from. Is because we want the very best for them in all areas. So we're just doing the best we can.
No, thank you. I, I appreciate it.
All right. Anything else on safe and orderly schools or monthly vendor report, budget transfers, enrollment? Everybody good? We can move on to superintendent's update. Superintendent Royal.
Good evening again. Just a couple announcements. You going to roll it? Okay, I'll skip that and come back to that. Um, first of all, we had a superintendent's family committee tonight that was held on March 20th. Uh, thank you to all who attended the event. Um, planning on scheduling another one for the next few months, so be on the lookout for that date. Also, I am super duper excited to talk about, I held my second student advisory committee meeting yesterday. We doubled in the numbers yesterday. Um, we have awesome students in Pawtucket. Um, I had about eight students that came and joined. They stated that they want to bring some more students along with them. And we worked on setting our expectations for our work together. We worked on our outcomes, what are some outcomes? We also dug deep into our district-wide, um, vision and mission that we have so that we can create our own vision and mission. And when I tell you the thoughts of our students that were shared in Ariel Castillo, who is our parent liaison for the district, is partnering with me in this work, so he's a part of that. It was a phenomenal conversation. The fact that students are so excited to have an opportunity to just sit and just share their ideas, their thoughts, what they feel they need to be successful in our schools. I had representation from all of the high schools. Um, I also had, um, a student from golf. So I told my one student, we're going to get the rest of the middle schools here also. Um, so it was a phenomenal conversation. They were so appreciative, um, well-spoken, well-thought-through, was very, very excited to even share what they thought we can do. So, um, looking forward to the next meeting. Uh, we'll have it when we come back from the break. So the next meeting is scheduled Monday, May 6th at 4:00 PM. And I started with scheduling it every other month. But this team is like, can we do it every month? Sure, no problem. Um, so it's held in Google Meet at 4:00 PM to give kids time to get home, uh, do what they have to do before they join. But when I tell you the, I, I've been telling, I even called my husband and I was like, look, this is the best day, like they just made my day. So thank you, the students of Pawtucket. And they are super duper excited to bring more. So I'm looking forward to that. All right, and, um, Thursday, I will have my superintendent's parent advisory committee meeting. So that's Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 PM. Parents, if you want to join, email Ariel Castillo. Okay, and then we can make sure we share the link with you. So I'm looking forward to that. So that'll be my second one as well. Um, moving on, we had a huge event, that's why, thank you Andrew, this Saturday, our CTE Career Fair. Um, Ms. Dubey was able to attend. It was, when I say a phenomenal event, we had over 80 vendors. And we also had over 175 students attend. It was a huge turnout. Um, our culinary chef king was here, serving our guests. Um, it was nothing but success. Uh, very well praised by vendors and our attendees. Both students and industry partners walked away with accomplishment and satisfaction. So I have the video to share with you because Ariel caught a couple glimpse of the event.
Welcome to today's Career in Technical Education Department Second Annual Career Fair. Today, we have the unique opportunity to celebrate the importance of career exploration and the multitude of career opportunities available to our high school students. As we gather here today, represented from that first career paths, join us, each bringing valuable insights, experiences and expertise. From healthcare professionals to engineers, entrepreneurs to educators, our guests represent various industries and professions, each offering unique opportunities for our students to explore and pursue. Today's Career Fair celebrates the balance potential and endless opportunities that await our students.
I would say some of the things I'm looking for today is like summer opportunities, learning about how to get my foot into certain jobs that I may not tell you that kind of thing, which I definitely like about people. I feel like networking is very important. Like obviously just knowing people, is it going to get you a job? You got to have the knowledge to back it up. But it would help out, like I said, to put you put in the door if you already know someone you could talk to that works in your job. Or you could talk to someone that's already, they already know your name. They already know what you're like. So it could be easier for them to hire you compared to some guy they just heard about.
Yeah, I'd say it's a pretty underappreciated thing to do in networking, even for people like us, high school, seniors, sophomore, whatever you may be doing. It's a pretty underappreciated skill to do because by networking, connect with people, get your foot in the door into fields and such that could benefit you even years down the line.
My experience has been really good. Um, I like it because I learned a lot of jobs and I've seen a lot of different opportunities for me. And it's a great experience for someone my age who's about to be 18 and going to work through to pursue different types of different jobs.
I'd say that out of a radiative head, my experience here with these people, I would say 15. So this was a really nice time. It was a very enriching experience to shake hands with, get involved with these people who are so passionate about what they do. It was really an amazing experience. I do not regret it.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Also, just to close out, um, I hear you. When I sit at this table, I'm taking in what you're saying when you step to that podium. I read my emails, I hear you, teachers, families. I, I get disheartened when I hear someone say, like the one teacher said, it's not the practice of the school department to translate and meet these other students. That is not my belief at all. It's our responsibility. Every kid have a right to be taught in their home language. That's my true belief, strong belief. And we're working on it. Like we currently have transportation information is translated in, in languages. Our program of studies, currently still working on translating additional information. Um, so we're working on it. I, I told the team, student handbook is next. I need that translated in all the languages. So I hear you. I don't want you all to ever step to that podium and not think that I'm not taking it in. I'm taking it in. Change is difficult at times and it just takes time. I know we are going to take this district to the next level. Like I said, those kids, that, that Saturday was phenomenal. Having that meeting last night, last night was just resonating. It keeps me going. They are the reason why all of us in this room do what we do. And we got to do it together. Again, I'm going to go back to my mantra, together, every student, every day. That me, I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So I thank you for your feedback. I'm going to take it back to my team and we're going to continue to make that happen and take the feedback and make a change in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. School committee member updates. Ms. Connie.
None, uh, tonight. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Ms. Benolo.
So we had our last wellness meeting and we had Dr. Passion from Bradley. And she talked about trauma-informed classrooms. And it's nice to know that, um, we're looking beyond the obvious. We're looking into why a student reacts in the way that they do. And, you know, she talked about how trauma comes in so many different ways, whether it be death, whether it be an abuse, whether it be bullying and how we react to that and how to draw students out. So it was really an informative meeting. I'd also like to mention that one of our members of the Wellness Committee passed away this week, Arthur Plitt. Um, Arthur is an advocate for all things. He was on the Warm Hots and the Coach Drives he put together for our families. Um, he's been on the Wellness Committee for a long time. He did the poetry slam. He was an advocate against tobacco use in the schools. He was just a very kind, caring and giving man. And, um, he shared all of that with anyone who he met. Um, so in his honor, I'd like to have a moment of silence when we adjourn the meeting.
Right. Ms. Faneles. Mr. Shal.
I have nothing. Good night. Thank you.
Ms. Grant.
Um, I just wanted to say since January, the superintendent and I have been visiting, um, some of the schools. Our goal is to get to every single one of them. I believe we've probably been to about six so far. Um, and, um, it's, it's, they've been great visits. It's been a while since I've been on visits to the schools. Um, and like I said, we have so many more to go to. But it, it's just funny how, how time changes. Um, at Agnes, we learned about, um, desk pets and how they accrue their little desk pets. Um, at Cunningham, um, we actually went at a great time. The students from Shea were working with the, um, that elementary students. Um, there was a table that was doing like a crime scene. There's a table that was, you know, making cookies, decorating cookies. Um, there was an arts table that, you know, it was just the older students kind of mentoring and, um, kind of being like big brothers, big sisters. It was actually very nice. Um, but on that particular tour, um, there was something that actually kind of got to me, um, in a good way. Um, the librarian came out, um, and I know her. And she asked if we could make sure that we went into the library because there was a little girl in the classroom who wanted to meet the superintendent. And her exact words were, she looks just like me. And when the superintendent went in, the, the kids couldn't have been more gracious. Um, one little boy wanted you to stay and read a book. And they were just unfortunately, you know, the time constraint, plus they needed to get to lunch and things. But, um, every school that we've gone to has, you know, shared something or we've learned something different. Um, I learned that Drew went to Potter's. Um, you know, so there was all these, all these nice little things that you wouldn't normally, you know, typically find out about schools or the kids or things if, if, by not going and visiting them. So I just kind of wanted to share my, um, takeaway so far. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dubey.
Thank you. I just want to echo the video. Um, the CTE Fair was wonderful. I want to thank, um, our legal representatives for having a table there, talking about, um, law and law firms in the state. It was a, it was really, um, a full community effort. So thank you for putting that together.
And I will be brief in, in thanking my colleagues who never fail to step up. It, you know, some of these mid, midweek, mid-morning events or, or weekend events are a challenge for all of us, uh, to juggle with our, with our work schedule. So for the, the fact that you guys are always available and willing to, uh, to speak on the committee's half, behalf, I appreciate that. I will be reaching out as we go through graduations and honors nights to, uh, to ask some of you to take some of that, uh, some of those speaking arrangements as well. But that's it. On that, I'll, motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Mr. Shal, seconded by Ms. Dubey and Ms. Benolo and Ms. Grant. Any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Good night, everybody.